I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the Alexander County Board of Commissioners regular meeting, Monday, November the 3rd, 2025. Our invocation will be given by Commissioner Ronnie Reese, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Larry Utter.
Come on, Stan. I'll pray. Father in heaven, we come to you today and we thank you for all the blessings that we enjoy each day and all the good things that come from above. Would give us a good meeting tonight, give us wisdom when we make decisions that will move Alexander County forward. Pray for everyone that came out, all the county citizens, or these that are here tonight, give them a safe trip back to their homes. Pray for all the county commissioners, for their families, all our employees, our emergency services, law enforcement, fire department, EMS and EMTs, protect them as they do their job for us each day. And we'll give you thanks for it all, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, does any commissioner have a report to give? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, sir.
Second. Are there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go into public comment. We do have a person to sign up for public comment, and we do have some rules. And Jamie Clerk will be putting up a counter on the screen behind me. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of three minutes has been allocated per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment would have had to prior sign up on the list. Adrian Applin?
Yes, sir.
Come to the podium, sir. And this is in reference to Paragon Films' noise complaint?
Yes, sir, yes. I would, thank you for being, allowing me to be the voice of my neighbors. I went around and I've collected multiple pages of signatures from my neighbors, and they're all very willing to sign, even our hometown legend, Harry Gant. He is most affected by it, living right across the road from them. And I just want to bring it to y'all's attention, maybe y'all can help us with this, because there's a lot of residents over there, and we pay our property taxes and been there way before that factory has. And you say allegiance for justice, well, we feel like we're kind of not getting it, not even a help. I got a police report here, I called the cops, they said they can't do anything. We're not expecting y'all to shut down a factory, we know people need money, but at least abide by the noise ordinance, because it's all throughout the night, you know, it's hard to sleep, and we gotta wake up and do our jobs as well. Just, it's a pump going out, and I talked to the plant manager, he don't seem like he wants to help us fix it, and I think another one's going out, because it's just getting louder and louder. And I'm nearly a mile away, and I should not be hearing it. I worked through, I worked with factories my whole life and never heard it this loud. It should not be this loud. And I'm hoping that bringing y'all's attention, y'all might, I don't know, find until they build a sound barrier around their pumps or fix their pumps, I don't know. Because they're running them so much, they might be burning them out. Business is picking up for them. That's about, that's about it. A lot of enforcement officers also in the community, but they're not allowed to sign for some reason. So, yeah, just, thank you for your time.
Mr. Applin, come here if you would.
Give the phone number.
Yes.
We can put your phone number up there so we can get back in touch with you.
And Mr. Applin's staff will investigate and will get in touch with you about your concerns, and do you have a copy of what you said other citizens have signed?
You can have the whole book. Police report here. You can have the whole book.
I'll take it.
I can get more of this round of time. There's plenty of more people have signed.
At this time, I'll call for a motion to enter public hearing, approval of road names. Sarah Millstead, 911 addressing coordinator, addressing coordinator, if you would, come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to call this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Podium jurors.
I'm just here to request the approval of the following road names as listed. The names meet the regulations as required, and they have been checked for duplication, sound indexing, et cetera. We have Brushy Meadow Lane, Burton Reed Drive, Camden Way, Cardinal Drive, Crotz Lane, Faith Drive, Paw Paw Lane, RD, Home Place Lane, and Red Dirt Lane.
This is a public hearing, so anyone in attendance has the right to speak. If you'd like to speak, just raise your hand, and I'll call you to come up from the podium. Do we have anybody that wants to have a word?
Have you had any questions or anything from the community, anybody write a letter or anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing for road names.
Second.
All in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve the road name changes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the road names as presented.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I need a motion to go into public hearing rezoning case RZ 2503 Dillow, given by Patrick Creach, planning director.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we go into public hearing for the RZ 2503.
Second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Creach, podium jurors.
Thank you, commissioners. This rezoning petition involves a parcel owned by Heather and John Dillow on Sulfur Springs Road, it's north of Hittinite. The Dillows live on the adjacent parcel south of the parcel subject to the petition, and the parcel that is being petitioned or requested to be rezoned is currently zoned R2, or residential 2. They have requested this rezoning in order to allow the placement of a single wide manufactured home, in order to allow a family member to live on that property. Single wide manufactured homes are not permitted in R2 districts. They request the parcel to be rezoned R2R, which would permit the single wide, and this property has public water from Energy United. When reviewing a rezoning, the state of North Carolina requires the approval authority to consider the consistency with the comprehensive plan, the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and the full range of uses for the rezoning. So I briefly want to go through each of those with you and answer any questions that you might have. According to the future land use map of the Alexander County Comprehensive Plan, this property lies in the rural transition area, as you can see on the screen, the kind of orangish area is where that lies. In rural transition areas, the comprehensive plan encourages development patterns which are generally lower density than would occur in urban services area, which would be the red portion where Hittinite is, but should allow for some higher density development where appropriate. Development should be consistent with a rural setting with more dense development near community service centers, which this property is not near one. And in general, this rezoning petition will be consistent with these purposes, and also speaks to the need to encourage affordable housing, which the comprehensive plan addresses. Now looking at the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, according to our Land Development Code, R2 zones are intended for low to medium residential development with some flexibility for non-residential purposes, while R2R zones are low to medium rural development with some allowance for rural commercial and industrial purposes. And you can see the full differences in your packet, I actually have the specific quotes pulled from the Land Development Code. You'll note that both of these zones are relatively similar, with some additional allowances for rural businesses in R2R. And when you look at this current zoning map, if we can move to the zoning map, you'll see that it does border other R2R zones and would be consistent and not be considered spot zoning. Lastly, you should consider all permitted uses, because once this is rezoned, if this is rezoned, the petitioner will be within their rights to use their land for any of the permitted purposes. In your materials, you'll see a full list of all of the differences between R2 and R2R. Those largely have to do with rural businesses, as I stated earlier. There are some density allowance differences, which I didn't put in your packets, simply because since there is no sewer, the maximum density doesn't apply, and thus actually they would have equal density requirements for both R2 and R2R, considering that they don't need that standard, which was two units per acre. When we received this request, it was forwarded to the Technical Review Committee, the Tax Office, and Economic Development, and no concerns or comments were provided. Signs were placed on the property, we've received a small number three inquiries about the sign, but no objections from the public. On October 9th, this petition went before the Planning Board for their recommendation, and they unanimously approved it. The Planning Department's recommendation is to approve the petition.
Looks like everything around it's already R2R, pretty much, or not?
Correct. Essentially, as you'll see as you kind of go up Sulfur Springs Road, and in general, this area north of Hittinite, that there are some, there are some parcels that are zoned R2, that generally, whenever it was rezoned, smaller parcels that had water access were zoned R2, and some of the larger parcels were not.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone in attendance have a comment or review in regards to this public hearing? If not, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir.
And if I could have a moment, I also wanted to mention an upcoming Planning Board vacancy that we will have. Longstanding Alexander County Planning Board Member Bud Kaywood is going to be moving to Denver to be close to his grandchildren, and as a result, he will be vacating his seat on the Planning Board. He served for a number of years and was always an active member in the community, and we cannot extend enough thanks to him for his dedication and his service. But we will now be seeking applicants to fill his seat for the remainder of his term, which ends on June 30th, 2026. And if anybody is at all interested, they can contact me, reach me by email at pcreach@alexandernc at alexandercountync.gov, or you can call the Planning Department.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners in regards to public hearing? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to clo- to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we did that.
Or did it?
Already, okay. I got it behind. Okay, make a motion to approve RZ 2503.
Second. First and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Britt Wilkinson, Corrections Enterprise Supervisor for Corrections Enterprises' presentation. If you would, come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, we'd like to thank you for, from the state of North Carolina and Corrections Enterprise, we'd like to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to come out here and speak tonight. Mr. Larry Utter here, and a couple others have already came and visited our two plants that we have right here in Alexander County. In this county, we do have a woodworking, a full-blown woodworking shop and an upholstery shop that inmates here in this county work at, and they are the ones that actually build these chairs and all the wood products that we have. A little bit about Corrections Enterprise, it is a, it is our, it is the only state agency that is, makes its own money. Corrections Enterprise is a, I guess it would be like a program for an inmate to be able to learn a trade, so that when he or she gets out into the world, they can have a trade to take with them. And it's not just for inmates that are getting out, it is for long-term offenders as well. They are able to learn everything that we have. It gives us, it gives them an opportunity to have a regular scheduled life, having to get up in the mornings, get ready, go to work, go to work, learn how to do things, and come back home at the end of the day. But I was asked to come here tonight and tell kind of about what we do right here in Alexander County. I've got a little bit more than we, than just what we do here in Alexander County, but there's so much to it. We could, I don't know if I need to, there we go. This is just a couple pictures of just some of the custom items we've done. As you can see, starting at top left, that would be a courthouse we have done. We've done so many courthouses in the 20-some years the woodworking plant's been open here in the county. It used to be in Iredale before they moved it. Going on over, it goes into the library, the down, the big national library down in Raleigh, I cannot remember the name of it. But, I mean, as you can see, some of the stuff, this is all made right here inside the prison that our inmates make. Another courtroom in the bottom left and the bottom middle. I think there's one more slide, there we go. Oh, wow. This is some of our conference tables. As you can see, they're all different shapes and sizes. The ones on the top left is actually a flip-down, or a, what we like to call a flip-top table. That is a training room inside Raleigh, inside the Department of Adult Corrections. So they use this room for any type of training, up to CPR, self-defense, whatever it may be. They can slide those chairs and those tables out of the way, then they nest together to make it just as tight as they can. Going down, as you can see, we can put logos in the center of the tables. I think that was the Department of Defense that we've done for, I cannot remember that Colonel's name, but we've done it, that's in his office. We do a lot with National Guard, we do a lot for schools. Right here, we've just done a huge job in Brunswick County. We just literally spent nine weeks in Brunswick County putting in new science labs in two of their high schools and two of their middle schools. We done, this was a huge construction job. When we walked in on that top-left picture up there, they had, I guess you would call it trenches cutting the floor, two or three foot, put all-new plumbing in, and then we come back in behind and put all-new cabinets and epoxy resin countertops that are highly rated for the chemicals and your hot plates and everything you have to have for a science room. So anything school-wise, we can do teachers' desk, and that's mainly what we're here for, is for office furniture and school supplies. Again, a wide range of office furniture and workstations. The picture you see on the far left is a very recent job we just done right here in Statesville at the new electric and utilities building. We just put both floors, all-new conference tables, desks, the top middle, that's another desk there, and as you can see, welcome centers there on the bottom side. And that over there at the far right, I'm pretty sure that was back during COVID. We, of course, you know, everybody had to have Plexiglas put up six feet away from everybody, so that was a welcome desk that we come in and put a top on to try to help with COVID. Now, CAD design is, we actually have two inmates inside the woodworking plant that, if you give us something that you want us to build, say for example, over here at the new building for EMS, got a phone call, they wanted some new furniture, tried to get us a quote, so I asked what sizes they wanted, kind of talked to Mr. Sigmund about what he wanted, and he gave us an idea, and we take it back and give the measurements to the inmates, and as you can see, every bit of this right here has been drawn by an inmate through a CAD operation. As you can see, we can do beds, we can do picnic tables, that huge conference table up there at the top, we are getting ready to put in over a 30-foot conference table, eight foot wide in Raleigh at the DOT. So, I mean, if you can just about imagine, these inmates can make it. Again, this picture on the left, we done last year, also in Statesville at the newest fire department. It's two-story fire department, they have up to 33 men or women at any time that will be there for shift. So we put three twin-size beds, two nightstands, and you can't see it on the right side of that picture, there's three wardrobes that went in every room. And downstairs, we completely, I mean, it's just like a brand-new office, everybody got new desks, new chairs, new conference tables, new lateral files, you name it, if it's in an office, we can make it. And there's just several other entities, I'm pretty sure that top-right one is at a Justice Academy that the inmates built several years ago. I'm not sure if that's the SBI Academy, or if that's the Justice Academy up in Hendersonville, I cannot remember. Obviously, we build display cases. That one at the top right, you can kind of see ourselves guy in the background there, that is at the highway patrol in Raleigh. And we have, we also do the welcome centers, excuse me, the one on the bottom right, I just delivered that during Hurricane Helene, I had to go around the barriers to deliver that one to the welcome center, it coming in from Tennessee. Also in Alexander Correction, we do have this upholstery plant. So any chair you see here, and this is nowhere near as many as that these guys sell, I'm actually working for the woodworking plant, but I'm representing all of Corrections Enterprise here today. Any office chair that you can think of, start from the left, that's their most common, the executive seat, and it just goes down from there, and you can come all the way up here to the top right, and that's again, a nesting chair, like I was telling you, on those tables in those training rooms. Those seats will actually fold up, they'll slide around, and we do a lot of that for training rooms and stuff like that, so that if you need to get it out of the way, it's easier to, you know, combine together. But any type of office chair, you can see the wood frame chair, my guys build the frame, we send it over to upholstery, they upholstery it and sell it from there. This isn't here in Alexander County, but since here in Alexander County, I'm not sure if we sell them chemicals, but Corrections Enterprise does any type of cleaning chemicals that you can think of. A lot of big ti- a lot of times, we do a big, as you see, schools out for summer, everybody in the school system knows that stripping and waxing floors is their biggest job in the summertime. I've got friends that were custodians in Caldwell County, and I've helped them out a lot, so this right here is something very, very hard to pass, because a lot of people like Larry and I talk, they don't know Corrections Enterprise is out there and what all we offer. So this is something that we do offer. We also have a metal fabrication plant in Anson Correctional. As you can see, we do national parks, we do state parks. The top right, that is a bear-proof trash can that you will see at some of these national parks. We do serving lines and dishroom washers for schools, we do them for the prisons. We actually have a maintenance guy that works for Corrections Enterprise that will come in and set up your dishwasher inside of the school, or inside of a prison, or inside of a jail. He will actually come in, set it up, and service it for you whenever it's needed, and he is based out of Alexander County. You can see a few more things that we do, you can see that bottom in the middle there, it kind of looks like a table, that is what we use inside our prisons and county jails now. Couple of pictures to the right, you can see we've done in county jails as well. Bunk beds for some of our minimum custody units on, in the prison side and for jails. But most of all, Corrections Enterprise, again, like I said, is for the inmate, and it's for the taxpayer, that they can get a better bill. We are under a general statute that we can only sell a top-notch, I'm making this smaller, because I can't tell you the whole general statute, but we can't sell Amazon furniture. We have to sell quality-made furniture. And we also have a general statute that anybody with a state agency has to buy from us, we obviously do not push that issue. We understand that sometimes these local governments, like here, and I'm a resident here in Alexander County, I'm a taxpayer in Alexander County, and I see what our prices are, but we do build a quality-built furniture. Our prison's been in here since '04, and I was just shown a desk that we have had in the kitchen since the place opened, and the thing still looks new. I mean, obviously, it needs to be sanded down and redone, but, I mean, you're going on 20-some years of a desk inside of a prison. But again, we want to thank y'all for the opportunity to be here. I do have something for each one of you.
While you're heading out, I'm gonna say a few things.
Thanks, sir.
We had the opportunity to tour the prison, and the one thing that I noticed there was, when we got there, I mean, I had toured it when it first opened, but this is the first time that I'd been in the prison to see how they actually were doing things. And the educational facility, the furniture manufacturing facility is unbelievable. You walk in, you go to the furniture factory, and it's just like walking into a factory in any place that you'd work in furniture. It's totally set up, they take care of things from the time the material comes into the door, they unload the trucks, they set it up and everything until it goes out the door. And it was impressive to watch these guys that was doing the work there, because they'd come into work that morning at seven o'clock, they had to get up and eat breakfast, had to be to work on time, they had to take their break at a certain time, they had to go to lunch at a certain time, and the same as you would if you worked in a factory. And the whole process there is to teach these inmates, to let them learn exactly what it's like to be out in the real world, and how to go back in and to blend back in with people that have not been in prison, but they've been there, and I don't like to call it prison ister house for a while, but they're there and they're being reeducated, and they're helping them, and the skill level they have. And as we were walking through, it was amazing to watch these inmates and the things that they would do. They spoke to you just like they do, I work at Cheryl Furniture in the, in the manufacturing and trucking facility now, and it was amazing. You walk through there and they'd speak to you just like the guys and the ladies at Cheryl does in the mornings and during the day. And they took their breaks, you had three, I think there were three people maybe working on computers that morning we got there, and they were well-disciplined, they were dressed just like you and I going to work, and it was just an unbelievable thing. And the furniture was just unbelievable, and I had no idea that our inmates throughout the state of North Carolina are taking these educational courses so that they can drift and come back into society and be a part of society, and to learn and to do things and educate themselves that they can be a contributing factor to society. And they have to be, not just anybody that's in the prison gets into these classes, they have to meet a certain criteria to get in there, and so it was just very interesting. The products that the state of North Carolina prison system offers is just really unbelievable, because I had no idea. And I've forgotten how many, I know they made license plates, I knew that.
Yes, that's, it's a women's prison.
And the women made the license plates in Raleigh. And I've forgotten exactly how many you say license, how many is, it's like, anyway, it was a huge number.
It's a lot, yes.
And the women do that, and the other things that they can do, and they're training these people to, the emphasis is that they're training them to fit back in society so that they can take care of themselves and look after things. So it was a great tour. If you ever get the opportunity, I'm sure that they would set you up to let you tour this facility and see what they're doing. And not every inmate in the prison, as I said, not every inmate qualifies for this program.
Correct.
And you have to be, I'd say it's a special student in the prison system to be able to get into it, so it's a, it's a very positive thing that they're doing at the prison system.
And I'd also like to thank CVCC, because they do have teachers inside that are teaching these guys. My job is not to teach, which even though I can teach, but my job is to make sure that the business is running. But we do have teachers there that teach these guys in the woodworking side and on the upholstery side, based out of CVCC, and I would like to thank them for that, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Gutter, and thank you for having us, and...
One question, how many inmates are actively working?
For Corrections Enterprise, or for me in woodworking?
Well, like for you, I mean, for you.
For me, I'm, I am allotted 56 inmates to work for me in my woodworking plant. Our upholstery plant, I believe, is 24. And the cups, I meant to mention a while ago, the cups, you see, they were laser engraved. We have that at our Salisbury plant, it is an actual reupholstery plant, along with the lasers and the mattresses. They make mattresses for all the prisons, all the county jails. We're trying to get a pie program, I think they've already got the pie program started, I'm not 100% sure on that, but that is to start helping these guys come in, and that will actually start paying them a minimum wage instead of a prison wage, which is a lot less. But it's to help them to earn more money, and it's a, we're under a general statute that we can only sell to state of, state agencies or local government, but if we can get this pie program started, they will be able to sell to other...
But if we can get this Pi program started, they will be able to sell to other manufacturing companies. And that's what they're trying to do with these mattresses. I'm not sure if they've got it off the ground yet, I've not, I've had a lot of other things going on in my plant, so I haven't had a chance to see of our sister plant. But I couldn't tell you how many, I would say there's probably 50 inmates down at those plant, at that plant as well. We have 27 different plants. We have sewing, we have laundry, we have woodworking, upholstery. We have all the signs you see on the interstate, inmates made it. Like Commissioner Gutter said, that we have, the ladies make license plate, and we also have a packaging plant that the females in Anson County, Correction Enterprise goes out and buys or sells canteen items that they don't normally get in a normal canteen, and they can buy it up to four to six times a year, I can't remember. And the ladies, when it all comes in, those ladies there package it and send it back out. So, I mean, there's just so much stuff that Correction Enterprise offers. I'm trying to step out now and try to let everybody around here know, in the mountains, Correction Enterprise is an option. Again, we are a little bit more expensive than most, but as Mr. Gutter said, it's a higher quality. I mean, you're looking at a 30-year desk versus a three-year desk that you would get on Amazon. Again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
At this time, we're going to ask Ben Falconberry, County Attorney, to present a resolution to appoint a county manager and employment contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10 is a resolution to appoint Justin E. Monday as county manager effective December 1st, 2025. His employment contract is also in your packet for your consideration. Mr. Monday will be joining us from the town of Troutman, where he has been serving as finance director since 2021 and has been the town's interim town manager since June. He's a fellow graduate of Alexander Central High School and Wingate University, where he received his master's in accounting. Mr. Monday is a native of Alexander County, lives in Wittenburg with his wife Jordan and daughter Jada. After any further comments from the board, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution naming Justin Monday as county manager, as well as approving his employment contract, both effective December 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this contract effective December the 1st.
Second. We've got a first and a second. Do we have any comments?
Well, first of all, I'm glad to say that he's going to be here, and I'm glad he's an Alexander County resident. And I think he has the skills and ability to do the job. We had a great interview with him, and things went very well. And this board all felt like that he was a man for the job. And we look forward to having you. The one thing that he said, I think, that stuck to all of us was the fact that he lives in Alexander County, he loves Alexander County, he raises his kids here, his kids go to school here. And I think he has some family maybe that teaches in the school system. And I'm just learning a whole lot more about him than I did before. So I just want to say, welcome, sir, well, we hadn't voted yet, but I will say that welcome. We're glad to have you, and we look forward to having you here, you and your family. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I hope I don't get myself in trouble, but I'm speaking from the heart. But Justin applied twice, Mr. Monday did. And I'm just glad that he come back around, implied again. I've had a short tender here, but for different reasons, we've had three managers here since I've been here. And it's been a whirlwind. And I think the good Lord puts, opens doors and puts burdens on you. And I went to a fundraiser in Iredle County a month or so ago, and for Jeff McNeely. And I couldn't tell you the first thing Jeff McNeely said that night. When I sat down, looked across the room, and Mr. Monday was sitting on the other side of the room. And, you know, that's all I had on my mind all night. And I thought, you know, this young man, I probably, probably made a mistake. I said, he's really professional, he took everything in, they had a few side meetings, and, you know, it just blew me away just how professional he was that night there and at that meeting. And he knows the culture here in this county, like Larry said, he grew up here his whole life. And to me, the culture of this county is not like any other. It's, if you wasn't raised here, you just don't really understand. And Mr. Monday, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, I'm looking forward to working with you, and I hope you're here when I'm dead and gone, because this is not a pleasant chore hunting a manager, and I sure don't want to have to do it again. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, too, I was very impressed with the young man. I've been young, and now I'm old, and there's a lot of things that happen between young to old, but I was very impressed with his interview. He's here in Alexander County, and I kind of iterate on what Commissioner Herman said. I like to see him be here when it's Kane and Walker time. So, you know, we've looked for three, and just as Kent said, it's not much fun. You know, I never thought I'd be looking for really one county manager while I was on the board, let alone, you know, looking for another one. But we want to get the right person. We, there's been some praying about this, and just as Mr. Herman stated, things will be laid on you, and I think that, you know, this is the best choice. I'm really excited about this young man coming, and I think he's in the county. He has family here, so, you know, he's got some ties, and he understands that, you know, there's a county hotline that don't use telephones or anything, so, you know, news travels fast. But I appreciate him coming, appreciate your family being here and the support that they give you, too. And look forward to working with you, support you on anything we can. Glad to have you come.
It's my turn. I would just say, I am very, well, let me back up. We had, we had, we had a good pool of applicants. We had, it was, I mean, it was, it was a strong, strong pool of talent and people. I don't remember how many applications we had, but it was, I want to say, close to 30. And I'm very pleased with, with where we ended up. And, you know, and I don't want that to sound bad, because throughout the process, you know, we go through, we were inundated by resumes, look at them on paper, kind of call through them. You know, and on paper, you only see certain things, you know, you only see certain things on paper. You see degrees, you see experience, you see, you know, work history. But you don't see, you don't see the person. And basically, what I'm getting around to is I'm, I'm very excited about having one of us. And when I say one of us, a very qualified one of us. And like I say, one of us meaning lives here, kids go to school here, is part of the community. Because like some of the other board members said, Alexander County is Alexander County. And we're different, you know, we're much different than, than a lot of counties. We're slightly different than the rest of them, but we are different. And, you know, and I just feel like, I feel like there's an advantage to understanding who we are. And I say who we are, I'm not talking about the board, I'm not talking about Alexander County government, I'm talking about the people of Alexander County, who we are. You know, it's kind of, you know, when I say Alexander County, I mean the people. Kind of like when I say church, I don't mean the building, I mean the people. So I'm just, overall, I'm excited. You know, if you don't do a good job, we know where you live. But, no, I'm not, no, I'm not worried about that at all. And I just, depending on, I'll say, depending on the vote.
Glad to have you.
Mr. Monday, you, you're from this county, you live in this county. You got a lot of friends and associates, and you got a church in this county. Our citizens come first, bottom line. It's a tough decision to do to select a new county manager, because if it goes wrong, we get all the phone calls and all the hate mail and everything else that comes with it. Put a lot of time and effort and thought into this. And looking, as Mr. Lell said, resumes, papers, that's one thing. But then looking at the individual, an individual that's going to, supposed to be and is expected to be a strong leader, one that gets in there and works with the staff that is underneath that person, to earn the respect of those folks. It's not an easy or a light task. But I'm excited to see some fresh ideas and encouraged, as we call for a vote. And if you make the grade here in a moment, all five commissioners will expect you to uphold all items mentioned here today. So we had a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Mr. Monday, if you would, come to the podium and address the county.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, residents of Alexander County. God's good, and it feels like coming home in a way. You know, I've never left Alexander County personally, but professionally, I have always worked outside of the county. So it is just amazing to be able to be county manager for the Alexander County, the county I grew up in, the county I live in. And first and foremost, I want to thank God for this opportunity. Our prayer the whole time was for the door not to open if I wasn't supposed to go through it. So I would like to thank Him first. Secondly, I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. I know it's not an easy decision, and I'm sure there were others that were highly considered that would have been very qualified to do it, but I appreciate the opportunity. It's one that I do not take lightly, and I will bust my tail every day to make sure that Alexander County is the place to be and that everybody wants to live in. And I just want to thank my family for being here, my wife Jordan, my little girl Jada, my parents, my sister. It's just an honor and a privilege, and truly, it's one I do not take lightly. And I look forward to getting to work on December 1st. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
In case anyone missed it, Mr. Monday will be taking his oath on December 1st in the morning, and that's when he will start as the county manager of Alexander County. And if you would, come up here with your family, and let's get a photo for the paper.
Mikey, you may need your flash.
Make sure that seal is in behind them.
We apologize for the lighting. So we don't have control of that.
Pretty much, yeah. Here you go. We got to have the seal behind, you know, showing behind. All Commissioners, please come to the podium.
On the count of three, one, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
I'll give this a little bit of awesome candy.
Okay, on the count of three, one, two.
Marty.
Give her some candy.
Yeah.
Okay, one, two, three.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
That's fine. I'm trying to keep my shirt down.
Okay, moving right along. County Attorney Ben Falconberry will present our Budget Ordnance Amendments nine through 12 and Project Budget Ordnance P-1.
Right, now on to the exciting items of tonight's meeting. Item 11 consists of Budget Amendments nine through 12 and Budget, Project Budget Ordnance P-1, which is the Urgent Care of Mountain View Project. Budget Amendment Number Nine amends the general fund expenditures and estimated revenues in order to increase the sheriff's office budget for additional expenses and related revenues. This is for billing outside entities for special assignments. It also increases the medical examiner budget due to a state fee increase from $1,750 to $3,625 per autopsy performed. Finally, Budget Amendment Number Nine decreases the estimated emergency management revenue for fiscal year 2026. This was Hurricane Helene Grant reimbursement funds, as those funds have been received in fiscal year 2025. The revenue from last year is included in fund balance, so this budget amendment appropriates that said fund balance as a revenue source to maintain a balanced budget. Budget Amendment number ten amends the general fund expenditures and estimated revenues in order to increase the budget for Health Department grant funds received for general public health services. Uh, this takes into account increased participation in work services, communicable disease implementation of electronic test ordering and result systems, as well as the child fatality case reporting and prevention. It also increases the DSS budget for administration and social worker, uh, enhanced preparedness skills, training to better serve children in the custody of, of the department. Uh, the via child welfare funding, uh, is used to cover these expenses was received in prior years. So again, this is a, uh, revenue source for this budget amendment is an appropriation of fund balance. Finally, Budget Amendment number ten increases the DSS budget to use adoption enhancement special funds, uh, for the adoptions program. Uh, the funding is to cover the expenses that were received in prior years. So again, this is a, an appropriation of bu, fund balance. Budget Amendment number eleven amends the general fund expenditures and estimated revenues in order to adjust, uh, the general fund budget for personnel costs for fiscal year 2026 that differ from original budget estimates and, and for vacation payouts of employees leaving county service during July through October of this year. Uh, Budget Amendment number twelve amends the general fund expenditure and estimated revenues in order to budget for professional service fees for the development of a master plan for Alexander County, East Alexander Park improvements, excuse me. That is also on the consent, contract for that service is, is also on the consent agenda. Uh, is also to budget for the five percent local match for the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant for the Urgent Care Building Renovation Project on Macedonia Road. Uh, that is also something that is on the, uh, consent agenda, or I'm sorry, it's Project Budget, Budget Ordinance. Funds from prior year's receipts of special sales tax under Article forty-four will be used for these expenses. Uh, Article forty-four sales tax revenues can be used for economic development purposes, purposes, public education, and community college expenses. Uh, since the sales tax revenues were received in prior years, they are included in fund balance and must be appropriated as the revenue source. And as mentioned, the Project Budget Ordinance is, is also included for your consideration. Again, this is a grant from the, uh, Department of Commerce in the amount of one thousand seven hundred, uh, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with a five percent match of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for a total project budget of one hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This ordinance will expire on August twenty-first, 2027. Uh, as this is a Building Reuse Grant, these funds will be used to renovate clinic space for use as urgent care of Mountain View, uh, providing a much-needed service to our citizens, as well as creating jobs in the healthcare field in Alexander County. I would ask at this time for a motion to approve Budget Amendments nine through twelve, as well as Project Budget Ordinance P-dash-one.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Budget Amendments number nine through twelve and also the Project Budget Ordinance number P-one. To approve those, as presented.
Second. First and a second. Any discussion?
Just have one question, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, uh, project for the Mountain View Urgent Care, is there any date when that will be completed? Or any generality of when it will be done?
I believe the construction will begin the first of the year, and I've, I've heard that it should take no less, no more than six months to complete.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, uh, we have a first and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. This time, uh, County Attorney will, uh, reschedule December Commissioners Meeting presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I am asking for a motion to, uh, reschedule our regular December Commissioners Meeting, which is currently scheduled for December first at six PM here in the, the meeting room at CVCC to December eighth, 2025. Same time, same place. That meeting immediately is after Thanksgiving holidays, so this will give staff some additional time to prepare the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve, as presented.
Second.
Have a first, second, any discussion? One item to note, um, let's, uh, try to remember that for, uh, next year. Okay. Um, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. County Attorney Ben Falconberry will, uh, read out the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item thirteen is the consent agenda, which includes tax abatements and adjustments of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, as well as tax refunds in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, uh, for September twenty-ninth through October twenty-sixth of 2025. Also included on the consent agenda is the minutes from the October sixth regular meeting, as well as the October ninth special called meeting. There is also the employment of myself to the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Board, as well as David Moose as alternate. There's a line item transfer report for October 2025, as well as the North Carolina Community College System Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 Budget Request Sign-Off Form for CVCC. Also, the 2026 Board of Commissioners Meeting Schedule and the 2026 Holiday Schedule for County Operations. And finally, there is a contract with CHA Consulting Incorporated for East Alexander Park Renovation Project Design Services. This contract will go to a Phase One master planning. That will include meetings with county staff and stakeholders to review desired improvements and a general layout of all proposed improvements to county facilities and a final master plan. Uh, it will also include a comprehensive cost estimate for construction.
Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And then, uh, Mr. Falconberry, if you would, lead us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A three, four, and six, ask the board for a motion to go into closed session. Uh, this is to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the, by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Uh, it is also to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the county, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the county in negotiations, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee. I do not anticipate any action following closed session.
Do we have a motion?
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor, right hand. Thanks for attending this evening, folks.